So hello everyone and welcome to a special session of Yoga Readers. For those of you joining us for the first time, Yoga Readers is an online global reading community that is interested in reading books about yoga. And today's special session is with Ayal Shifroni, who is a senior Ayengar yoga teacher, who's been practicing yoga since 1978, so he has more than four decades of yoga practice. And he is, so I said, a senior Ayengar yoga teacher. He's the director of the Ayengar Yoga Center in Zechon Yaakov in Israel, and he has been conducting international yoga retreats, that you can learn more about on his website. And he dedicated his life to deepening and sharing yogic wisdom through books, classes, and retreats. His internationally acclaimed publications include A Chair for Yoga and The Extended Chair for Yoga. And then he has several volumes of props for yoga. I'm showing two because I have only two hands, but the first volume is dedicated to standing postures. The second is for sitting postures and forward extensions. The third one is inversions, and the fourth one is about back bends. He also wrote The Psycho-Physical Lab with Thohad Nachtomi and Yoga in Nature and Natural Props for Yoga. And he's working on his next book, Yoga with Ropes. He has translated into Hebrew, Light on Pranayama and The Tree of Yoga. So he will share today with us some of his experience in writing books, translating books, and of course, his work on The Tree of Yoga, which is the book that we just finished reading together, this global yogic community called Yoga Readers. So Ayal, I will start with my first question to you. What do you think is the role of books in the practice and teachings of yoga?
Okay, so a book is like storage, or I don't know, of knowledge that is given in orderly fashion, that you can always come back to and read again and again and learn more and more. Like, let's take Light on Yoga. You know, she said that I'm practicing more than 40 years, but still, you know, and I learned from so many teachers, but still Light on Yoga, I have a few copies, one in my studio, one in the living room, one in my bedroom. And I refer to it very often, and I'm sure each one of you too, right? You use Light on Yoga every now and then. So why do you do that? Because you know many things, but always, you know, to come back to something that is well-written and it can remind you of different things that you forgot, or show you like another option, another asana, new asana, or in my books, another way to use props in order to practice an asana in a better way, and things like this. So the book is always like a very important source of knowledge. It is not a substitute for a teacher, because yoga is a subject that should be transmitted face-to-face, from teacher and student relationship. But it can complement, and it is a very important complement for the teaching that is done in the class. Yeah, so I get from my book a lot of feedbacks, very positive feedbacks, which is, this is actually what makes me going and keep writing books, because it's a very hard work. But many people are using my books, and they say that it contributes a lot to the practice, to the teaching. So books are important, even in a practical, you know, subject like yoga.
And what are the limitations of books? Why do you say that it's not a substitute for a teacher?
Yoga is also a connection, a relationship between a teacher and a student. You learn, you get knowledge from the students, but not only knowledge, you get inspiration. You see his example, his practice, his demonstration, the way he teaches, the way he behaves in the class. So all of this, you know, is a lesson. This is something that you learn from, which cannot be given by a book. Also, a teacher, a good teacher, is keep learning and keep bringing new things from his practice, from his studies. And a book is fixed at a certain point, you publish it, and that's it. You can publish another version, okay? But it is limited, it's not something that is flowing like oral face-to-face teaching.
And how do you think The Tree of Yoga stands out among BK Sayengar's writings? What is the importance of this book? Why is it part of the teacher training syllabus?
Well, The Tree of Yoga is very unique in its style, in the way that Gurjia presents things. Well, he has his technical books, like Light on Yoga, Light on Pranayama, but from the books that are more philosophical, it stands out because it really, when I read it, I can really hear Gurjia. Because I refer to him as Gurjia. I really hear his voice and his, the way he uses to talk. Because it's actually like a collection, it's edited collection for his talks. So the language is really, really his own language, his own words, and his own way to express himself. And it is very unique, and he has a way to explain in this book, very complicated things in a very simple way. So it is, you know, everybody can read it and enjoy and understand. Other books like Light on Yoga Sutras, which of course are very good, and the other book about the sutras, I just forget the name, can you remind me, Agi? He has a book that does not go by the sutra, but by themes, which is even more like evolved, more. It's difficult, you know, I have to go really deep into it in order to read it and understand it. The Tree of Yoga, you can read, you know, even on the train. It is very readable and and it brings very important things, not only about life, about how yoga connects to life, to everyday living. So I always liked this book, and when I went into translation, it was the first book that I wanted to translate.
And how do you think it relates to Light on Life? Because we already read that book as well before we read The Tree of Yoga. Can you say something about that?
Yeah, well, Light on Life is much later, much later, and Gurjia took like two American writers. It has, of course, it's a treasure with a lot of wisdom that Gurjia accumulated and unveiled, let's say, during his life. But the style there is more, is not so direct, it's not like he's speaking to you. The way it is written is more like American style and not Gurjia's style. So I like this book, of course, but it doesn't talk to me like The Tree of Yoga.
Because you don't hear his voice, because it's not a conversation, but an edited book.
Yeah.
Yeah. And when you translated The Tree of Yoga, at least in the Hebrew edition, you write in the introduction that you had talks with him about how to interpret the book. Maybe you had some questions for him about certain words or philosophical concepts. Can you share, can you share something about this process of translating a book and then talking with him about it?
Yes, so translation, every translation is a kind of interpretation, because you don't translate word by word. You have to understand the whole, like, passage, the whole idea, and then see how you can express it in your own language, in the destination language. So it is open to interpretation, because, you know, many things, when you choose the words in the destination language, Hebrew in this case, you have many options. And there were many places in the book that I was not sure how to express it, how to translate different terms. Like in Hebrew, we don't have a really word that has all the connotations of the word mind, which is very, of course, very central word when you talk about yoga philosophy. We don't have a word, one word, that you can translate mind into. There are different words, but none of them is exactly like the meaning of mind, semantic field of mind in English. Well, Gurjia could not tell me which words in Hebrew to choose, but whenever I was like hesitation, or not sure about how to translate like a paragraph, yeah, I was sitting with him in the library and explained the difficulty, and he gave me some, you know, advices and how he sees it, what he meant by it, and then it helps me to, you know, to form it into the Hebrew language. And also for this book, I got a lot of very positive feedback from Hebrew readers in Israel mainly. Yeah, a lot of people really love this book. When recently, we started here, like a kind of preformation before the teacher training, and they had to read the introduction of Light on Yoga. And they were quite shocked by the number of new terms, Sanskrit words. It was difficult, they were overwhelmed. But when they got, we got to The Tree of Yoga, they felt much better. They could really feel the relief that now they can read it and enjoy and understand. I think this is, you know, unique about this book.
And as someone who wrote books about yoga, could you share some of the challenges that you encountered? And I'm also interested in how can you put down into writing something that is a physical or bodily experience, and of course, even even more than that? And also, what was your motivation to write more than eight books by now?
So for top of eight, I hope the ninth will come out soon, The Hooks for Yoga. Yeah, it all started, actually, that I wanted to collect these different pieces of knowledge that I get information from workshops, from retreats, from visits to Puna. I used to go to Puna starting from 1988. Every other year for one month, sometimes even more than that, like for more than 30 years. So, and I'm not so organized in my notebooks. So when I wanted to prepare a class or a workshop, I went to my notebooks, and it was very difficult to find something, because it was not organized by, you know, like by the asana or by a certain subject. It was just, you know, notes from different thing, different workshops, different visits in Puna. And so I decided, okay, let me do something for myself, that I can be more organized. I do it in the computer, and in the computer, I'm very organized. And you can, of course, you know, you can take all the material and edit it, so it will be edited, you know, by like, by the asana or by the prop or something that should give you some order. And I wrote it in Hebrew and I printed, okay, I added photos to make it more clear. And I printed 300 copies, and I came with them to a workshop, to some international workshop that was in Israel, and they all sold out. And there was one lady that had the book, and she took it to the US and she gave a workshop. It was, you know, I decided, I tried to write on all the props, but then I saw it's too much. So I decided to concentrate in one prop, and the one that I chose was chair, because I think chairs are very, very useful. And they are available, they are not very expensive, they don't occupy a lot of space, like a dresser or other props, you know, like special furniture. It's something that everybody can have at home. And it's very, you know, multipurpose. You can do so many things with a chair. So she gave a workshop about chairs, and the students asked there, where is the book in English? Can we have this book? So she came back and she told me, I have to translate it to English. Beginning, I didn't want so much, because I said, okay, it's only, I wrote it for myself, it's not something. But she really insisted, she like almost forced me, she was a very strong woman. And I translated. When I translated, I also added things. So the first English version is even more than the Hebrew one. And the Hebrew one, anyway, sold out, I only, only one copy. And, okay, then I wrote The Chair for Yoga, and it was accepted. You know, I put a like clip on the book, like a promo, and it became viral. It really went, like, went into a niche that was not populated by other books. And a lot of people really liked it. And then I got so many enthusiastic feedbacks. So it gives me, you know, motivation to continue the work and to write more books. And then I decided, okay, let's now go to other props and make it a little bit more professional, you know, take a professional photographer and so on. So that's how it went. And yeah, writing books, coming back to the first part of the question, is difficult, because when you teach face-to-face, you demonstrate, you can use your intonation, you can use the body language, the movement. All of this does not exist in a book, there's no intonation. And also, you know, when you say something, it goes, you know, is there. And if you say a mistake, okay, we'll correct it later, or, okay, maybe the students would never notice. But when you write a book, it's much more, how do you say, michev?
It's a commitment.
Yeah, it's a commitment, because you don't want to write things that are not correct. And this is one thing. The other thing is how to express these expressions or these instructions without body movement, without intonation, in a way that it will be clear, but also short, concise. Because you don't want to write, you know, very long books. It can make people tired. The instruction has to be to the point, not too much, the important ones. And this is difficult. Luckily, I had, I had a background, you know, the, which enabled me to do it, because I used to work, I have a PhD in computer science, and I used to work in writing books about computer science in the Open University in Israel. And there I learned actually how to write. Because my first writings, the first books that I tried to write was disaster, because I didn't know how to put things in, you know, in a concise and clear way. And I learned in the process, you know, from people more senior writers that were there, gave me comments, and I improved. And so I have this background, and also I have my practice and many years of study. So I combined these two, you know, to, let's say, gift. And I think this is why my books, you know, were so popular. Many people are using them. But it's really hard work, because, you know, you have the writing, you go over it 100 times, and you give it to readers, you correct it again. Then you have to give it to a graphical editor, you have to do all the photography, which also has to be, you know, well-done, the demonstrations are very important. And then graphical editing, and finally publishing, all this is a process. So I keep doing it, because of, you know, I believe that if someone has some kind of gift or something special that they can give to the society, they should give it. And I'm blessed in this respect that, you know, I'm able to write these books and help people in our community, in our international community.
Ayal, I am always struck about your modesty. And as you say, as you tell us, that you did not want to translate it into English. By now, Chair for Yoga was translated into Spanish, Portuguese, Italian, French, Polish, Russian, Korean, and Chinese. So it reached so many people.
Also Vietnamese and Japanese, and yeah, Polish, yeah, yeah, as you mentioned, like about 10 translations, yes.
It's amazing, you have a global reach. And I can say from my own experience that before I attended those early workshops that you did in Israel with the Chair for Yoga, I had very little information about how to use it. And for me, it was really life-changing and a game-changer as a teacher of Ayengar yoga.
Thank you, yes. As I said, I got, I got a lot of such feedbacks, and this keeps me going. And I'm happy to, you know, I can contribute, you know, my little, my little share to spread Ayengar yoga around the world. Yeah, in the beginning, I used to send books from Israel. I didn't think about Amazon as a platform, and I used to print here in Israel and send. And I learned geography, because I got requests from different countries, islands in the, in the Pacific that I never heard of. And so I'm happy that, you know, Ayengar yoga, or yoga in general, because maybe not all of them are Ayengar yoga students, but they're yogis and interested. So.
And today, your books are available on Kindle as well, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and today, I don't send from Israel anymore. It's expensive to send from Israel to Europe or to the United States. So I use Amazon as a platform for the marketing.
Yeah, it's truly amazing, because people see your books, they get inspired, and maybe they are then drawn into Ayengar yoga. It's not always the other way around. It's not always Ayengar yogi is interested in how using the chair, could be the other way around.
Sure. The Kindle versions are available in my site. So this can be purchased in directly from me, not from Amazon. They are also in Amazon, but printed book.
I put the link in the chat for everyone here.
Thank you.
Ayal, you've written numerous books about props, which is, as we said, a huge inspiration and a great contribution to Ayengar yogis worldwide, as in Light on Yoga does not have props in it. And there are Lois Steinberg's books who do mention props and show several images, and they have explanation, but she's more focused on therapy, right? There is a cancer book and a knee book and so on. And your books are different, because they offer something for the general public, right?
Yeah, yeah, I don't focus on therapy, because Lois, Lois Steinberg is doing a great job, and, you know, she has a lot of experience and knowledge in this area. And my books are not for, not, you know, also, you know, people can use it as a therapy, in a way people that cannot do asanas can use my books also. But the main thing that I wanted to convey is that how props can enrich your practice. So even if you can do the pose without a prop, using the prop, you can learn something new about the prop, about the pose. Because like, if you, the props can give you different effects that make different actions that you have to do in the asana very clear. Like, for example, we say that we need to take the femur bone into the sockets. In like, let's say, utita triconasal, and we need to maintain the load on the back leg. So if you raise the front leg on a chair or even on a block, you feel that the femur bone is going, of the front leg is going much better into the socket. And the back leg, you feel heavy, because you changed the geometry of the pose. So then you can try to do it without the prop. Once you get, you know, the experience of how does it feel, and you can try to recreate it without the prop. So, and you know, there are many examples like this, that how props help you to study the asanas to a much deeper extent. And this is the main focus, you know, that I want to share. But even, you know, people that not suffer from serious health problem, and they can practice without props, they can do everything, but they can still, you know, use the props, sometimes for restoration, but also for, just for learning. And Gurjia said that props are the guides, because with props, you'll never go wrong. So I quote this in some of my books, it's a kind of inspiration for me.
Thank you for that. And can you say something about Yoga in Nature? Because before I met your book, for me, nature was a big no-no. Like, I need my walls, if possible, ropes, I need my props. Just the idea of going out and practice in the park, I can do it, but not a serious practice. You know what I mean? Then you have this book, Yoga in Nature.
Yes, so it's not that I, you know, I enjoy also practicing in the studio, and I do practice also in the studio, but when I go out to nature, I feel really different. I feel energy. In the studio, when I practice, sometimes it takes me like half an hour, even more, to really to get into the practice, to become quiet mentally and to open the body. And in the beach, where I practice most of the time, it's like instantaneous. I mean, I go there and immediately, usually, you know, I don't go on Saturdays, because then the beach is a little bit more crowded. But on weekdays, because in Israel, you know, Saturday is the free day. People don't work, so they go to the beach. But on the other days, it's quite, I'm quite alone there. And when I go there, I really feel, you know, the wind, the water, the air, the fresh air, the wind. So the, all the elements of nature. And often I can do, I can do the asanas with much less effort, with much more focus. And often I succeed to do asanas that I struggle at home, and they come easy. I don't, you know, how exactly to explain it, but I feel it. And so I practice especially in the summer, which, you know, in Israel, it's like eight months that I can go to the beach, it's still not, not very cold. Just maybe from December till March, I practice more at home. But from April to December, I go on the beach. And I live, luckily, I live close to the beach. And I live, luckily, I live close to the beach, like about ten minutes dry. So I practice a lot there. I have a special tree that I start early in the morning, but when the sun comes up, I go in the shade. And I found out so many ways to to use the sand as a prop. And it's actually more like flexible than the artificial props we use, because you can made from the sand, different shapes, you can use different levels. You can dig small holes, you can use slopes. And so and then I also practice, I like trekking and I go to the mountains, to the desert. I practice with the rocks. When I go to the forest, I practice with trees. So over the years, I developed many ways to to use natural elements as props. And then I wanted to share it and to say to Ayengar yogis that afraid to go outside to practice, that no, nature has a lot of advantages. And it doesn't mean you have to give up the props. The props are there, you just have to be creative and, you know, know how to use them. So in this book, we have some introduction, I have my introduction. Oad wrote introduction, Oad is a professor of philosophy, so he wrote about what philosophers said about, you know, about nature and about the connection between man and nature. And then there's a practical, you know, three chapters, one beach, in the forest and in the mountains. So wherever you are, if you have, you know, access to nature, I recommend, you know, going out and try to use natural props and props are always there, you just have to, you know, to think how to use them. And yeah, it's been creative, being creative is also good because it's keep your mind fresh and keen.
Thank you. I have my last question and then we can open it up for a discussion. As we are a reading community, I would like to ask you, if you could give us some advice about how one should go about and read a yoga text for the first time? A practical book or a theoretical book, if you have any tips for that?
Yeah, maybe before that, I just say a few words about the psychophysical lab, which is also different from my books about props, because it addresses a philosophical problem or issue, which is the connection between the mind and the body. Like, it is something that experientially, we feel that that we are one unit. Personality, you know, body and mind are connected in so many ways. And when, you know, I want to move a limb, I can move it. But philosophically, it's not so easy to account for it, because the body, you know, you can study it like machine. You can measure, you can quantify and do experiments. So there is, you know, science of anatomy, physiology. And the mind is a different category. So how come my will or my intention, which is like the mental sphere, that we cannot quantify? How does it convey into like a pulse in my brain or in my nerve system, which contracts a muscle and do some action? The, you know, the transfer from the mental realm into the physiological, it's not, it's very difficult to account for. But in the East, it's not a problem at all, because they see the men as one unity. And so Oad writes a long introduction about the approaches into this problem in philosophy. Some philosophers, like very known, well-known, well, world-renowned philosopher, I think Professor Leibovich, he thought that this problem cannot, can never be solved. And he's not the only one. But so he wrote about from Aristotel until nowadays, the artificial intelligence, different approaches to to this problem, which I think is very very good survey of philosophy. Because this is one of the central, you know, themes of philosophy, the body-mind problem. And then there are, we call it explorations, in which you're doing asana and often you repeat it in different ways. And sometimes you change something in the body and you observe the effect on the mind. And sometimes you change something in the mind, like the focus, point of focus or the way, you know, you use your mind for the body. And then you see how the effects experience of the pose. So there are many explorations like this, which gives you some, you know, insight into the connections, the very strong connection between the body and the mind. And then we also offer some kind of our own like solution to this problem or approach to how to solve this problem. So, yeah, I think also this book is quite unique and very interesting. And we also discuss how yoga, different capabilities that we get in yoga, like balance, like flexibility, or even like preservation and discipline, willpower, how we develop all these things through the practice of yoga. So it's kind of more, you know, because many people said, okay, yoga helps a lot and yoga does this and this, but they don't try really to account for it in like a more scientific or, you know, more to give arguments that would be convincing. And we try to do it in this book. It's an attempt and you can, you know, judge if we succeed or not, but so coming back to the question, how to read books about yoga. So practical books, of course, you don't read cover to cover. You just, it's like use it as a reference book. You wanted to study, you know, in depth. One day, when you practice, you decide to study Vira Bhasanamahana, so you go to Props for Yoga, Volume One, for example, which is about standing poses. And you see many ways to do this pose with different props, with a belt, with a chair, with a block. And then you study this pose. Or you want to work one day with a certain prop for few asanas. So you go to the book to this part and you, so this is for the practical book, for the philosophical. I think also it's not books, it's more like textbooks that you you have to read again and again and come back to to different parts of the book. Maybe it's not also, you know, written cover to cover. I never, you know, I'd like light on your sutras cover to cover, but I read it often. When I, you know, think about the sutras, I go to a certain sutra and I read the interpretation. And one more advice, practical advice is then don't get afraid for the new language, for the Sanskrit, all these terms. You have to develop patience and slowly, slowly it comes, you know, even without you. When you study it more and more, you become familiar with the vocabulary. I think I know a few hundred words in Sanskrit, but I never learned Sanskrit as a language, just from yoga, from the asana names and from the books about philosophy of yoga. So, yeah, this is my advices, I think.
Thank you, Ayal. So this is our time for discussion or questions and answers. You can post questions in the chat and I will read them out loud, or you can raise your hand. So we'll see, you can either physically raise your hand or there is this possibility of raised hand in reactions. Any questions?
I'm sure Agi, you have questions, so.
I do, but I want to give them a chance.
When will the Ropes for Yoga be available? Oh, it's a good question. I'm on it. And the photos are, I have all the photos. And I'm in the process of writing, I've said, I wrote about half of it. But it will take a few months, because the graphic editing take time and then, you know, corrections, proofreading and so on. But I'm quite sure that it will be in twenty-five. But I don't want to make another deadline for me, for myself.
Ropes are quite remarkable, aren't they? You can tie them to anything.
Yes, yeah, ropes are very useful and yeah, and also, you know, when I read books, I practice a lot with the prop and always find new ways. So there are many, you know, even things that were surprising even for me, the things that you can do with the ropes. When you focus on some subject, you go deeper into it and you find new ways. So, yeah. And there are many, many things you can do with wall ropes. I limit myself to wall ropes, I don't go into cylinder ropes. Because wall ropes are more common, many, in every, I think, every Ayengar center and many private homes. Sending a little bit more, more difficult to bear.
What about branch ropes, ropes that you can put on branches of trees?
Yeah, yes, when the Yoga in Nature, we we show, we show some things to take belts or ropes and connect to trees. Yeah, still.
Would you consider writing something about sequencing, like and the effects of different, how different sequences? Or have I missed?
In all my books about props and also in in the psychophysical, yeah, in all my books, there are sequences.
No, but what I mean is more like in this kind of style that you were, you were, I'm, I don't, yeah, I'm not quite sure how to put it into words now. But when you consider more the effects, how different sequences have an effect on you? And so whether, how, as a student, how you can learn to think more about and setting an intention for what effect you want to create. So like, whether that, I don't, I know that you touch upon these themes always, but I was wondering whether it would be.
Psychophysical, there are sequences for joy. There are sequences for building confidence. So, yeah, and other, like, I think there are four or five sequences for different mental effects. But your question, I don't know, I I never thought about writing a book about sequences, it could be interesting. Sometimes I play with the idea to write, to try to narrate my experiences in yoga, my path in yoga.
I think the reason why I'm asking is more because I was always, I always feel like when I practice by myself, it's never the same effect as if I am being guided by someone. And then I always wonder, like, how can I, like, I used your books a lot when, actually in the time when I didn't have a teacher. So to like, then look up again, okay, what is this pose actually about? What, how can I use the prop? Like, what does it even do? You know, what it's supposed to do, not what I think is supposed to do, but what would a skilled person say is supposed to do?
Yeah, well, in my books, I try to, I give instruction, but I also give tips, which are more things from my experience that how.
Yeah, that's why I was just thinking like, it's, I know you touch upon these things, but I was more thinking like, that's a whole.
About it maybe one day.
It's probably very difficult to do, so.
Yeah, yeah. Sometimes I play with the idea to write a book about, more personal book, about my own path, my own experience, my meetings with Guji, my traveling in the world, meeting so many people from different nations and so on, but I don't know if I'm, you know, qualified enough to write really something which would be interesting. So I still hesitate.
I think you'll only find out once you do it. So just do it, people will love it. Just try.
Ayal, what would you tell people who say that props are a hinder to the practice of yoga, like they take you away from the classical pose? They make you do things you're not ready to do without props? They make you dependent on the props? What would you tell them?
Okay, so first of all, you don't, I mean, if you can do the props in the poses independently, so you should not be dependent on props. You should be able to do, sometimes the asana or the practice without props. But I think props are wonderful. I think that, you know, it's such, you know, it's like you go to a new place or like a lab with so many instruments and you can play with them and you can get different effects that you, difficult to get without the prop. And why not? I mean, and also, you know, I follow my guru. Who's the guru, he introduced the props and used them a lot, especially when he got older, but even before, he was prop. So I think, you know, it opens up a new horizon of possibilities, makes the practice more rich, more playful, more creative. And it's, you know, don't have to give up, you know, also sometimes to do without props, it's not doesn't mean that you always have to use props. What is your? There are two questions, so.
So what does your home practice look like? How do you incorporate your balance, learning from books or other resources and the physical expressions of poses? That's by Megan.
Okay, so in the first years, I used to follow sequences. Especially on Fag Birya, which conducted the teacher training here in Israel. He gave a lot of sequences to head to practice in the teacher training and this like form a very good base. But then, now today, I don't follow a sequence. I just start and I see what comes. And I never know in advance what will be, you know, the sequence that I'll do, because one pose leads to the other pose and so on, develops like this. Actually, in my teaching also, it is very much like this. I do have some, you know, general orientation, but I don't know in advance what exactly will be. It depends very much on the situation, circumstances, how the reaction of the students. And sometimes I just remember, you know, out of the blue during the class, I remember some variation that could be very nice, so I give it. So today, this is more my practice. I do try to balance the practice over the week. So each week I'll practice, you know, different families of asana, standing, forward, backward, twisting, inversions, I practice every, inversions in Burnayama, I practice every day. But all the others, you know, one day I focus on backbends, one day I focus on forward bends and so on, one day standing.
Jill is asking, when will you teach a workshop in the US?
Probably never, because I had a very difficult time going to the US. And I had a very difficult experience there. It was many years ago, I had no experience, but I was invited to teach in some places in the US and I came with my wife and we planned the whole, you know, three weeks around to teach in California and Florida, so coast to coast. But they stopped us in immigration in Philadelphia when we landed. Eh but we, they stopped us in immigration in Philadelphia when we landed. And eh I didn't know that I need a working visa for this. And eh I didn't have a working visa. And eh somehow they got to know it, and they stopped me there, they put me in detention. They had me there for twenty-four hours in very humiliating eh conditions. They treated me like, I don't know if you met the disimmigration people, but eh they really treated me like the terrorist. They had, they, I had to take the, just to give you an example, I had to take the laces out of my shoes. So I will not hang myself, like this. So eh it was a very bad experience and eh. And then I tried to get a working visa, but it was a long process, it's also expensive. And just when I was about to finish the process, the Covid came. So I stopped the process of, you know, getting the visa. And eh, you know, I found out that the world is eh very big, was even without the U S. Eh I I would like to teach there, but eh, you know, I teach in Canada, I teach in South America, I teach in the Far East. So many countries, so there's no shortage of places to go.
So this is a call out for all American Ayengar yogis to arrange for Ayal's next next visit, maybe through an Ayengar Yoga Association of the United States.
Maybe, maybe one day it will happen, yeah, I need the help to get the working visa, because you need recommendation, you need to prove that. That no eh U S citizen can do, that you have something unique to give, and you, so you have to show your eh C V. And what is your contribution, and get a lot of recommendations. Oh, it's a tiring process, they make everything very difficult. But I don't know, maybe it will change, or maybe one day I'll do it.
So we have Maureen, who would like to ask a question, and then we have another question in the chat.
Hello. I I understand that yoga has evolved since the fourteenth century and before that. But I am really concerned in the way yoga is evolving now, in that because of the internet. And I see things and and it and eh and I say, this isn't yoga. So my question to you is, how are you gonna preserve your legacy?
Eh well, it's very difficult, and it's, you know, not only one man's job. Eh and there is a danger, because in the West, eh in many, you know, there is like the spy yoga. And the supermarket yoga, instant yoga, and so many things that they made yoga. Eh and it's sad in a way, because yoga is is a way of life. With, you know, with ethics, with Yama and Nyama, with, you know, all the other four limbs after Panayama. Or Patyahad, Harnad, Yana Samali, it's part of yoga, not only the asanas. And many people even don't practice Panayama, they just do the asanas. They just treat it as a gym culture. So, you know, I think it's a responsibility of the teachers to study the philosophy of yoga, to practice their routine also in their life. The way they live, and to, you know, to teach it, to spread it. Eh I try to do it in my teaching, in my center, in in the workshops all over the world. Eh but, you know, it is eh, it's a good way that yoga is well-spread, that many people practice yoga. And, you know, in Hebrew, there is a saying eh. Mitoch shlo leshma yavol leshma, it means that eh when you started with something, even if the reason is like that you want to, like, to lose weight or to get fit. Maybe it will lead you to the more deep aspects of of the practice of yoga. So it doesn't matter, even Gurji said, it doesn't matter why you start, whatever is. But if you start and you go deep in it, you should eh in some stage, you know, find out what yoga really is, not just, you know, the physical side of it.
Thank you, Ayal. There is a question in the chat by Radju. Uh which of Gurujie's books do you find more more inspiring, most inspiring?
It's a difficult question, because eh there is, of course, Light on Yoga and Light on Panayama, which, you know, I companions that I use them daily. And I, every time come back to them to, you know, study more, to get clarifications, to get eh. Instruction, more instructions. Eh but from the more philosophical book, as I said, I think the three of yoga. Although it's, you know, it's not complete eh like the Light on Yoga Sutra. You know, but eh, but it is eh something that talks to me, inspires me a lot.
So if time permits, I have one more question. Since you are such a seasoned practitioner, um I guess yoga looked different in the eighties, or you started in the late seventies. Um I'm interested not only about yoga in Israel, but you have this global vision, since you met so many people, international Ayengar yoga teachers. But not only, could you say something about the trips to India, uh how yoga is seen, uh understood over the decades?
Eh well, eh maybe you know more about me, because you studied the subject, but I remember the first time I came to India, I was in a train. And I started to talk with a man, and I told him that eh I do yoga, so I said, okay, I also, I told me I also do yoga. So I said, okay, what style of yoga? He said, I go to my guru once a week to hear a satsang, which is talk about, you know, philosophical yoga, and this is my yoga. So this was completely due for me, that you can do yoga without practice asanas. That yoga is much more than that, and eh just by listening to a guru, eh can consider doing yoga. Eh so eh, and then in in the late seventies and the eighties eh. Eh there was mainly Shivananda yoga, and that's why I started with Shivananda. And then yoga became so popular, and and the teachers, you know, Ayengar started to spread this yoga and so on. Eh so yoga became like eh very popular in the West. Eh, yeah, eh. I, you know, my traveling, I started actually like about, I think, twelve or fifteen years ago, and yoga was already well-spread. And mainly I teach in Ayengar yoga centers. So, you know, I cannot really, you know, talk about the evolution of yoga eh in general. Because I only see, you know, a window of practitioners that eh come to my workshops.
But let's say, when you started practicing Shivananda yoga in the late seventies, not everyone knew what yoga is.
Yes.
Right? And the knowledge was not as accessible as today, and also the disinformation wasn't that prevalent as today. So I think this is, I want to continue Maureen's question about the integrity of yoga, the authenticity of yoga, let's say, the the lineages. Uh do you have any thoughts about that?
Yeah, just want to share an anecdote, it's my daughter. Eh she was born in eighty-one, my first dau- eldest daughter. And eh in the eighties, when I used to practice on the beach, she used to be shy. Eh my daddy is eh doing weird things in the beach, you know, but. And then, like twenty years later, when she came to me, she was bitch, and I practiced, she's very proud, because now, yeah, now yoga is eh, is eh. So eh considered something so good and popular. Eh, yeah, so eh what did you say about the integration or?
Uh the integrity, so it's it's everywhere, and sometimes it's diluted and misunderstood. Superficial perhaps, but eh on the other hand, it's everywhere, and it's very accessible.
Yeah, it's very accessible, so it's good in a way, I said, but eh, yeah, but eh if people stay on the physical level and just do like. You know, spy yoga, they just go to kind of, you know, sweating yoga and things like this. And they don't go into deeper, you know, but what can you do? Many people are just superficial, but yoga is deep subject, and you need to devote yourself, and you need to, you know, it's a, it's a way of life. You have to change the way you interact, the way you behave, the way you relationship with people. It's all about yoga, so it is not limited to to the practice on the mat. And eh, you know, more and more people realize it, but not everybody.
So eh do you have anything else to add, something we did not raise a question about, something we didn't mention that you would like to add before we finish?
Eh no, I want to thank all the, you know, the people that eh use my book and give me feedback and come to my workshops. And I also want to thank you, especially Agi, for inviting me and organizing this eh, how do you call it, reading eh.
Yoga readers.
Readers, yes, the other eh readers group. And for you, that you were here, patient enough to listen to me. Eh so, yeah, thank you for that, and, you know, the gift of yoga. Really, every day I feel blessed, and every day at the end of the practice, I devote, you know, a few minutes to think about Gurji with a lot of gratitude. And eh I try, you know, to spread this gift, because I think it's something so valuable. And so, you know, can make your life so much better, that eh. You know, I devote my life to to eh this practice and to spread it as much as I can, you know. I cannot, you know, like Gurji, but in my own small eh territory.
So thank you very much, and this is our opportunity to open our microphones and thank Ayal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I hope to see you somewhere around the globe in my, one of my workshops, or even not in a workshop.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Agi.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Bye-bye, all of you.